Okay, we need to get the meeting started. It is six o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. The time is 6:01 and we are gonna start off by attendance. Director Mom, if you could do that for us, please.
Director Tate?
Here.
Director Hadeen?
Here.
Director Mom, here. Chair Davis?
Here.
Director Dressley?
Here.
Director Bysel is not present and I believe, yeah, so, and then Director Reese is not here too. So, I think that's everybody.
Great, thank you. Let's stand, please, and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. So first up, I need a motion to approve the agenda in table file. Director Mom?
I would like to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda. Can we do that or do we need to?
You can make the motion to amend it, no?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda specifically to pull policies two, 410, 413, 414, 415, 414, or 514, 522, 524, and 616 from the agenda completely and request that the Policy Committee make these priority policies at the August 11th Policy Committee meeting and then bring them back to the Board on August 24th.
Is this to ensure a proper annual review of those?
Yeah, during discussion, I'll explain that.
Okay, sounds good. We have to, I'm just curious. Okay, do we have a second to that?
So moved.
Second, Lisa? Second, okay, great. Okay, so now there's time for discussion on that. If you want to take it by Chair Mom and anybody else has discussion on it.
Thank you. So on July 21st, MSBA published a list of revisions. There's a whole laundry list of revisions. I don't know if everybody's had the opportunity to take a look at it yet. But what I'm thinking is because of the quick change, you know, just six days ago, that we bring it to policy, we do the reviews. There's substantive and non-substantive changes to a lot of these policies. So if we do the review and then bring them back in August for the Board to review, a lot of these are actually our annual reviews. So we can make those changes. The idea is that, you know, our practice in the past has been in July at this particular meeting, we get all the annual policies to the Board. But now that MSBA has made these changes, we thought, okay, maybe we just pause it for a month or two, get these changes done, bring it back to the Board so they're clean and good to go. And confirm too that a two-month delay will not hinder us based off of state statute with having the annual review because they were approved in 2021, we're still in 2022.
Director Tate?
Sorry, I was not able to keep up with that list of numbers. Was that?
It's everything.
Thank you, okay.
Yes, all the annual reviews and consent agenda, yes, the whole thing. Director Dressley?
I would also like, can I make a motion to amend the agenda as well?
We have to, we have to vote this one? We close this and vote it and then we'll go to the next, yes. Director Hadeen?
Thank you. I just, for clarity's sake, my review of these prior to the meeting because I felt like that was important, look at that. I did not see any substantive changes. I just want us to be accurate that the ones that are here for annual review, the modifications are not substantive. I don't have any concerns. If you'd like to see it in a different place at a different time, that's fine. But I just want to be clear for the public, there's not substantive changes that were put in here for a consent agenda item.
All right, based upon, do you have something else, Director Tate? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess when I went through the policies, I compared them to the MSBA model policies and there were actually some, for instance, that maybe they've changed the wording of the description of the state statute type of a thing. So they are legal reference type things. So I did see some of that thing, so those types of things. So yes, I appreciate this being brought back to committee to make sure we get those cleaned up.
And I guess my question for the Board is have you seen that newsletter that came out on the 21st? Okay, all right.
Any further discussion? Okay, with no further discussion, then I will call for a vote on making the proposed agenda change per Vice Chair Mom. All those in favor of the change, please signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed? No opposed? That passes. So we will make that adjustment to the agenda. Now, Director Dressley?
So I have motion to remove the Personnel Report from the Consent Agenda and move it to an individual item on the agenda. Just.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Open for discussion? Director Dressley, you want to give a little bit more detail on that?
Just because when I had asked about things that were on there, Superintendent McDowell advised me that it would be updated. So I just figured it shouldn't be in the consent agenda then. If it's being, if there's new information on it, we should all be looking at it and voting on it then.
I believe it has been updated, but we can definitely pull it out, take a look at it, go through it that way. That'll be absolutely fine. That's fine with me. Any other discussion on that piece? Director Hadeen?
I don't feel that a Personnel Report item should be, needs to be, or should be outside of the consent agenda. That would be, have been managerial administrative work that we should support and I don't anticipate supporting that motion.
Yes, Director Mom?
I guess my only concern with the Personnel Report being pulled out is that, just to read it, we can't name names, right? Okay. So can you provide me, I don't know, a little bit more clarification as to why we need to pull it out of the consent agenda?
Just because it was updated after we all got our Board Book packets or online. So it was updated, I believe, today. So just so that everybody's aware that it needs to be looked at, that it's been updated. Was it? Okay.
It was actually updated Monday.
Has everybody at the table looked at it?
I have.
I looked at it on Sunday, so I am not aware of changes.
Anything else for anybody to contribute before we vote on this agenda item being added? All right, with that then, we'll vote. All those in favor of adding this agenda item, please signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, Director Hadeen?
Point of order? My understanding is that the motion on the table is to amend the agenda to move Personnel Report from a consent item to an individual action item. It's not an add. Is that my correct understanding of the motion? Yes.
My apologies. I meant the movement of it off of consent onto an individual action item. So again, with the motion to move the Personnel Report from the Consent Agenda to an individual action item, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? For one, and that will be adjusted as well. Sorry. With these two adjustments, I am now looking for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight as amended.
I actually would like to make a motion to amend one more thing on the agenda.
What is that, Miss Director Tate?
Move the yearly Board Membership Renewals to the regular agenda, move it from the consent into the regular agenda as well.
That would then be actually moving it to an individual action item. I'm assuming that's what you mean?
Correct.
Do I have a second on that?
Seconded.
All right, discussion.
So the reason is I'd like to understand, there are two, specifically two of these annual memberships that seem like they cover the same function. And so I'd just like to have a discussion around that.
Is that, have you emailed either Chair Davis or Superintendent McDowell regarding that?
Yes.
And did you get answers on that?
Yes, which is why I'd like to discuss it. Because the answer that I received basically said that these two organizations do the same types of things. So I'm questioning us being involved in continuing going with both of them.
Any further discussion on this piece? All right, the, excuse me, the motion on the floor is to move the yearly Annual Renewals that is on the Consent Agenda to an individual action item. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye. I think I'd like to see it. Opposed? Votes three to two, we will make that adjustment. Anything else on the agenda? All right, with that, I make a motion, I'm making a motion to approve the agenda with the three adjustments that have been made. All those in favor? I need a second, I'm sorry.
Seconded.
I'm in a hurry. Seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. I now need an approval of the minutes from the June 22nd regular Board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? With no discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed? Motion passes. Sorry, I got unscrolled here. I'd like to take a second to thank all of our folks that are here in person and all those attending online as well for being part of our meeting here and being part of our process. Thank you for being here and thank you for attending. With that, I'm gonna move to announcements and recognitions from Superintendent McDowell.
We have nothing for this evening?
Okay, then. Wow. Okay, then we are gonna go to the Listening Sessions. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know why I'm not looking around. I apologize. Director Hadeen?
Thank you. I happened to be on the Hastings Community TV YouTube page yesterday watching some baseball and I saw one of their links that the Echo from April 8th, 2022, did receive a National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors, or, excuse me, Telecommunication Officers and Advisors Award. It was a finalist in its category. And I think that later we take some action with regard to Minnesota State High School League in recognizing Hastings Community TV as our acknowledged media partner. And I just want to call this out. It's a recognition both to Community TV and to our class on broadcast journalism.
Thank you for reminding us about that because my daughter was the anchor for that one and she chose not to tell us about that. So thank you. Appreciate that. I'm not getting it. Okay, let's move to the listening. Thank you very much, Director Hadeen. Let's move to the Listening Session summary, please. Who's taking that?
I'd rather not because I was very involved.
Okay, then, Director Mom, if you'd like to take it, please.
All right. So we did have one individual, a community member, speak to us regarding communications. There are a few follow-ups that I want to discuss with you, Chair Davis, after the meeting. So we really appreciate you coming and talking to us.
Okay, if that is it for Listening Session summary, Chair, Vice Chair Mom and I will circle back afterwards. Let's get into some reports and discussions with the Superintendent.
All right, I have a short update this week, just reminding folks that with regard to food service, the waiver that's been in place allowing all kids eat for free is now expired. And so people need to be filling out their free and reduced applications and those have all been sent out to people. And it's important that we get these completed because the percentage of free and reduced meals impacts other funding that we receive as a district. And so we'll be back in that mode trying to get as many of these completed from families as possible. But a larger thing is parents need to be aware that meals will be charged this year as they have been in the past. And then the other thing is just reminding people that as we approach August, we need to be scheduling immunizations and sports physicals if we have not gotten those done. Students entering preschool, kindergarten, 7th grade, and 12th grade all have requirements for immunizations and sports physicals are needed every three years. So again, just for those listening and parents, make sure that you've got those scheduled and/or get them scheduled soon. As far as communications, we will be ramping up our Raider updates. Next week, we'll have the Midsummer Raider Update and that will include a lot of updates and reminders for everybody, just like we've done in the past as far as starting school. And then following that, building principals will be sending out communications specific to their buildings. So with that, I'll turn it back over.
Thank you, Superintendent. The next thing on our agenda is the Building Construction Fund project update. I'm assuming that Ms. Subert's gonna take that?
Yep, so just a reminder, the Building Construction Fund accounts for the money the district received from the voter-approved bonds for school renovations and improvements. We had four additional projects move into complete. So the Kennedy McCullough Partial Roof, the High School Lecture Hall, the Middle School Softball and Baseball, it says backstops, but it was also encompassing some fencing, and then the miscellaneous deferred maintenance projects. So there's an additional four projects there that have been completed. And then both the District-wide Fire Alarm and Alert System and the High School Fire Alarm and Alert System are moving to in process. So the number of projects that are in design and not completed is continuing to get smaller.
In this case, that is smaller is good, right?
Correct.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Subert on that? Okay, moving on to the ISD 917 update, that would be Director Hadeen.
Yes, thank you. You can see there was a summative note from our June meeting. Everybody's free to peruse that at their leisure. We have also had our July organizational meeting. That's the timeframe that 917 does their org meetings. So we did that in July, completing our Superintendent Evaluation and began drafting goals, set the calendar for this next year. And they're using an interesting model that I think we should watch and maybe consider going, just watch and learn from. This calendar was set with work sessions being held prior to the regular meeting. This is probably driven by the fact that Board members are traveling a notable distance to get to these meetings. But then within each work session, two primary vision, or two primary core values for 917 are stewardship and integrity. And alternating work sessions have that as their primary mission. And so it's really easy and articulated that the work to be done will primarily, for example, be stewardship, which would be budget, finance, maybe buildings and grounds, personnel or insurance. And in a following meeting, the substantive part would be integrity, which would cover issues like, well, policy equity and diversity, curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Obviously, if you have to take up something in a work session, you would take it up. But I just thought it was an interesting way to approach aligning work sessions to core values. And then I did, in addition to the organizational meeting, Board meeting, I attended 917-wide training, all-team meeting that was primarily around Directors of Special Education and Special Services and to talk about the fact that they are very challenged, not solely, but primarily to talk about the fact that they're very challenged to fill teaching and especially parent positions. So most districts are gonna anticipate, we should, we'll have to anticipate, we will still have students on waiting lists, waiting to get into their services. And that will likely continue for the bulk of this year. They're certainly trying different ways to resolve that issue, but there's no identifiable solution at this time. That's all, thank you.
Thank you for the report, Director Hadeen, I appreciate that. We're gonna move on now to the Policy Committee. We've already talked about it kind of a little bit. So Policy Committee report, please. Director Mom?
We met on July 11th. And to summarize what's in here, we are redrafting our mission statement to take us through January of 2025. You will see two policies listed for later today or later tonight, a policy 530 immunizations along with the packet for registration stuff that administration had been working on. And then policy 610, field trips. We discussed the three-year policy review cycle and then the annual policy review cycle as well. So that will be a continuous discussion until we get that, get all the kinks worked out. Naming of pools and facilities. So we had a community member ask us if we, we had talked about this in a work session too, so this is, if it sounds familiar, this is why. Asking us to consider naming the middle school pool after Kimberly Olsen, who passed away in November 2021 and was very instrumental to all of our kiddos who took swimming lessons. So question for the Board is how do we want to respond to the community member and do we want to name the pool? And then do we want to create a policy that outlines criteria for naming facilities? So there's a few. I did link ISD 917, policy 815 for reference. So I'm gonna take a pause and see if anybody has, is now okay to get feedback from the Board since, is that okay? To see where everybody, what everybody wants to do. So I don't know who wants to start.
Director Tate?
I guess that if we are going to move forward with naming things, I think that it's important to make sure that it's publicly known that we are looking for, you know, options of what we'd like to name, you know, and give them adequate time to be able to provide their input and their suggestions.
Director Hadeen?
So to paraphrase that, Director Tate, it sounds as if you would be a proponent of establishing a policy for naming? Or? Okay, that's the question.
Director Tate?
Yes, I think, I think if, I mean, we obviously have names for several things already and there may come a time when we would want to rename something for some reason. So I do think it's a good idea to have a policy in place, yes.
Just weighing in, following with Director Tate, I tend to agree with that. I think that it could come up and I think that we need to have a policy established and a way to make sure the community is well-communicated to in terms of what's going on there. Because to Director Tate's point, you can end up with a renaming. I mean, anything could come up and I think it's important to establish a policy that encompasses them.
Anybody else wanna weigh in?
So I guess I would just ask that we have a procedure, also a process. So that's, that's, along with the policy or outside of the policy, that it should be somewhere.
Yeah, I tend to agree that, you know, policy and procedure, I'm not a big fan of adding more policies. I think they tend to limit our ability and flexibility. But I digress. But for this particular instance, you know, because it would require community involvement, I think having that policy in place, okay, this is one, a one-stop shop, this is what you do if you want to make a suggestion for naming a pool or, you know, any of the facilities. And then the procedures that go along with it. So that way, you know, we can, it's right there, we know what to do and we can move forward when we get those requests. So thank you for the feedback. I'm still going. Okay, so another question for the Board is something that we've discussed at the Policy Committee meeting is, does the Board want to start pulling procedures from policy and creating a procedures binder? So I would, I would like your input for that.
Director Tate?
I agree that policies and procedures need to be separated, but I think that from the perspective of a staff member, of a community member, I think that the procedures should lie with the policies. Maybe the policy is like the header on the website and then the procedure follows it so that it's kind of a one-stop shop for finding the information that they need.
Director Hadeen, did you wanna add something?
I do, thank you. And we have had this conversation a couple of times at the Policy Committee meeting and I think the district, our district has a longstanding, if not, well, forever is a long time, has a longstanding practice of using MSBA as our, as our model policy source. And MSBA will acknowledge that there are procedures embedded within their policies. In the event that we chose to make that change, I think it, and to start separating and to reflect something that looks a little bit more like, I think it's Mounds' view has made a notable break from MSBA's model policy. I think it needs to, we need to have like a really deep conversation about it and portray the pros and cons one next to each other. And then secondly, should we want to take like a nominal step? The procedures that belong to the Board are 200 series. Those are our series, right? And so, you know, we should maybe continue a deep conversation about the relationship of the handbook to the 200 series. But the administrative procedures, which belong to virtually every other policy category, belong to the administration and to the management. And I don't believe are ours to strip out and identify which is which. That's where my current reflection stands on this topic.
Director Dressley?
So I would agree that we should take the procedures out of policy, but not completely revamp them. I mean, we would just literally be taking the procedures out so that we're not readjusting whenever there's an adjustment made procedurally. The policy wouldn't need to be changed at that point if we had those separated. The policy wouldn't need to be changed at that point if we had those separated. That was my opinion of it. And also the 200 series, I think the procedures would stay in the policy because that is something that we are responsible for. I mean, we, so that is ours to, to own, so to speak.
Yeah, I, I agree with your first point in, in that having the policy, you know, when we make updates or if there's a substantial change to a policy that doesn't necessarily, or correction, let me reverse that. So if there's a procedure that is, is a change, okay, we have this procedure in place and it's just not working for, for us, for whatever reason, that administration can then go in, modify those procedures. They would still let us know, obviously, but we wouldn't have to go back and, you know, bring it back to the board and approve and ties in with the policy. So no, I agree with that. With the 200 series, I think we'd have to have a little bit more discussion about that. But I think housing it, the handbook might be an appropriate place, but like 206, that, yes, that's a board policy, but the procedures I would agree need to probably stay in there just because it impacts the, the community involvement piece of it. So I think, you know, Director Hadeen, you had mentioned something about, you know, we need to have a deeper discussion. I wonder if this is just something that we added to a work session and, and have, have a deeper discussion about what that actually looks like and our involvement as a board, governance versus management. So that's, that's my input.
Director Hadeen.
Thank you. I would tend to agree, a work session discussion would be good. I'd be interested in having some examples provided where, because I'm struggling right now to think of a time when a procedure has changed that's required a policy change. So I'd have to understand, I just want to understand that better and have that be an example or two that's presented during the meeting.
Director Tate.
I have one example. The, in two of the policies that were in the consent agenda for this evening, it has Kathy Moens' information all spelled out in detail. And obviously, should Kathy not do that job anymore, that policy needs to be rewritten to reflect that. So that's the type of specifics that I think would, that we're talking about.
Director Hadeen.
Thank you. And I acknowledge her point of order, we're really only supposed to talk twice, but this isn't an action item. So my understanding is that that level of detail, especially with regard to Title IX, is a, is a statutory requirement.
Superintendent McDowell.
I would just add to the conversation that you are going to want, if this is the direction the board wants to go, you do need to also have the conversation about to what degree you're going to follow MSBA model policies. That, that is a point that can't be missed. And the second thing is, as a board, you really need to have more conversation about defining the difference between governance and management. If you're going to pull policy separate than procedure, then we need to continue the conversation about what is appropriate governance and what is board members getting into management?
That a lot of the policies would state, the district has a procedure for, to follow the statute. That was my understanding of how that would work out, that the policy would state, we're following the state statute and the district has a procedure for that. And then the procedure would be as followed and that would be theirs to own.
Okay, I think that it's a good place to just kind of break that off because we're going to get this into the work session. We'll get into a lot more detail so we can belabor the finer points in a slightly longer setting in our work session. So I appreciate that input. Back to you, Director Maum.
Next up then for us is that we're going to be, there are a few outdated 500 series policies so that we're going to get those caught up and then looking at the 700 series policies following. We, we already discussed it just now, the 200 series procedures, so more to follow. And then policy committee meeting meets on August 11th. And you can see there's like the, the list of stuff that we're going to be discussing, obviously with tonight's changes with the amendment, with those policies that will take precedence at our August 11th meeting. But my hope based off of the, the work session discussions is that we can also take a stab at 206 and, and 208, along with a few other items. And then we anticipate uptick in how many times we meet each month. That's, that's all I have.
With the adjustments that, that were made, Director Maum, it looks like you've got what a first reading, and a third reading, and a third reading, yeah. So you, so let's get, so let's get to the first one, which is policy 530. Okay, do we need any detail behind 530? Or is since it's just a first reading? We just need to know what, were there any adjustments made to this or is it just?
If you take a look at the policy 530, which is immunizations, you'll see on page two, they're written in green, those were some changes. So we looked at the MSBA model policy. And then there, if you go back to the agenda item, there's a registration packet and immunization forms that fall in line where they, they accompany 530. So pending your feedback, that's, that's 530 for a first read.
Director Hadeen.
Thank you. I have, I have no comments to the 530 policy in particular, but it caught my eye when I looked at the registration packet. And this is not, this is not in the immunization forms, but I think it's a top, probably a topic for future consideration. But when we see registration or documents that we need submitted about students, I think we should, and maybe we have to talk about and establish a policy on this, but I think we have to consider forms that provide a, a non-binary identification for gender and resume, remove a presumption of father and mother as the, the two default parent categories. This registration packet does not have the mother, father default on it, but I think I've seen it in Minnesota State High School later during high school registration. It just, it just caught my eye this morning when I was doing a review. So for future consideration.
Anything else for feedback on this first reading of 530? Okay, well, great. Let's move over to the third reading for policy six 10, which is field trips.
So you'll see on page, of course, I scrolled down too far, page two, under three regulations, see there was a request to add in verbiage regarding the responsibility of the volunteer to pay the cost for the background checks. So that was added in. That's, that's it for this particular policy.
Are there any other questions or comments on this? Because if there are not, then there'd be a motion to move it to an action item. No? Okay. With nothing else there, then I need a motion to move policy six 10 to an action item this evening.
So moved. Second.
With that, I will take a vote. All those in a favor say aye? Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. That leaves us before we get to our action items with international trips.
So this is a topic that the board's asked to review, has asked to review about every six months since it went into effect back when all of the COVID restrictions went in. And so being that it's July, we're at that mark. Last time that we looked at it, I believe, was in January and then there was, nothing had, or there was official action taken last, I believe, a year ago in August was essentially the last time that it was changed to allow for trips to be taken in the contiguous United States. But they had to submit a plan. So now we'd be looking at, is that something that you want to change? Go back to the way it was, leave as is, which essentially where we're at with it is, our students can take field trips, the band, all that stuff, as long as they're not going somewhere beyond a contiguous state.
Director Wesley.
Thank you. Are there any requests to go on any international trips by any of the?
So not current, not officially, but there will be if you open this up, I'm sure of it. We'll have world language planning, theirs, could have music planning, something, things of that nature. So I think they're just, they'll wait to hear what you approve or don't approve and then that's when they'll come in.
Thank you.
Director Hadeen, and then I'll get back to Director Wesley.
Okay, thank you. So my current reading of the last action is that this restriction on international travel lasts through August of 2022. And if we were to take no action, it would timeout. Now that I wouldn't purposely take action, I think for clarity's sake, we should take action and make a statement about it. But is that an, is that accurate? So we could, we could take no action and it, and it times out.
Director Wesley.
I was just saying, thank you.
At least you're still miked. I'm sorry, Director Hadeen. I will say this, that even, I, I agree with Director Hadeen in that even though it would timeout, I think that we need to proactively make sure that we identify, here's what we're doing now so that people know. I just know just from my own information that I have, that I know that it takes time for either music, as you know, or languages to build out a trip. So clearing the deck now mean, doesn't mean they're going next semester. It means they're going maybe next summer or the following fall of 2023. You have to clear the deck a good year out for them to be able to do it. So I think, I feel personally at this time, might be prudent to look at, look at getting that done. Oh, I'm sorry, Director Maum.
I guess, yeah, I, I am open, I, I see no reason to not open up international trips so long as, and I, I know there's, they have to have an emergency contingency plan in place. And I, I don't see any reason why we can't lift this and allow students to, to go enjoy Spain and all the fun places.
Director Hadeen.
I concur. I, I think the thing that we might have learned though, well, we learned many things, but one thing that we should learn going forward is, I think we should consider whether our policy with regard to international trips would mandate trip insurance that either be provided by the organizing group or that it would be an expectation that our, that our students would purchase that or they have to opt out at a, at a bare minimum because I think that is our best way to at least protect the financial investment. We can't do anything to protect people's time investment, but.
I would, I would agree with that. Just, I know, just speaking from personal experience, after being over there just a little while ago, the security I felt going over there was the fact that I knew I had that insurance. And if I had tested positive to come back to the country, it was going to be covered. I could have, you know, I would have, you know, isolation, everything, but it would have been paid for. And I think that's something that until we're well clear of this situation, we probably need to make sure that within, built within it is a requirement that they get insurance either through themselves or through that organization that's organizing it. I think that could be very important. Director Wesley.
I agree. The trip insurance absolutely should be a part of it. And I also agree that we should open up international travel.
Director Hadeen.
This is just a procedural question. So based on the conversation here, I think we have something that looks like consensus. Would this come forward as an action item in August with, with associated language? Is that likely to be the next action? This is just right here now for a discussion item.
I'm just going to check with Dr. Merdell that, I believe that's how it works, right? We need to get the language and then we could approve it the next, or it'd be a first reading?
You could do it, well, it's not a policy.
It's not a policy, so we can do it whenever.
You could do it two ways. You could move this to an action item and you could make a motion to reinstate international travel with the stipulation that groups require travel insurance and pass it tonight. You could wait till next month. And you could, we could write something up to say the same thing and then pass it next month. It's up to you.
Honestly, I think that the more time for planning, the better. I, I'd make a motion that we move it to an action item tonight for a vote in terms of moving it, or I don't know what the wording is, to reinstate international travel, I guess the way I'm putting it, with the stipulation of the travel insurance being there. But I need a second and a vote.
I second.
Any more discussion? I know we've had a, Director Tate.
I do have one procedural concern and it is based on the fact that I know several people who have gotten sick abroad and then got stuck, like forced to be there. And that would be my concern if we had minors that are stuck abroad. And I guess my, my concern would be, I would want wherever these kids are going to be well researched, to understand that ahead of time so that maybe we avoid those countries for now, to make sure that somebody doesn't get stuck there for, for an extra 10 days staying in a hotel type of thing. That's it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Merdell, but don't any proposals for international trips come to the district anyway? I mean, they can't just do it unilaterally, right?
Yeah, they do. They come, they come to the district and we wouldn't be able to probably navigate on the front end, all of that. But that was what you're bringing up as a concern is, the reason the board went with what they did before was for exactly that, was the fear that it's great to go over there, but what happens if somebody gets stuck there? So that's, I think it's a, I think it's a valid concern. And we would just have to navigate it trip by trip. And again, the hard part's going to be, you're planning for a trip now and the trip might not happen for 18 months. So what is a hotspot now in 18 months might not be, and the opposite is going to be true. So.
I would lean on administrative, that part to be administrative in the sense that I know I've seen situations with both colleges and schools where something happened with, let's say, two kids tested positive, just example. It was already, there was already the process in place where a faculty member or whomever happened to be chaperone stayed back with those children until they could leave as well. So there was an insulation, you know, they weren't on their own, in other words. There's always going to be a plan for a chaperone to be there if this were to occur. So I think it has more with, to Kerry's point, just making sure that logistics is, is in place administratively.
And that was the other, from an administrative standpoint, that was basically our fear was that we were going to end up losing staff potentially because of this? Because if we have to keep somebody over there for two weeks, now we're short staff for two weeks potentially, or without an administrator for two weeks. So again, I think it's a valid concern and it's why the board decided what they did over a year ago and has kept it because of those unknowns and the, the need to keep kids safe if they should have to stay back.
Director Hadeen.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say for purposes of the motion that's on the table, which is to take action and move this to, and approve this now, I'm leaning towards voting against that motion with the intent that it be brought forward, this action item be brought forward at the end of August and that language be developed so that the statement, so for example, previously all domestic travel field trips beginning September 1st must include a COVID mitigation plan. I guess I'd like us, I'd like the administration to take time to craft a statement that's a little bit more fleshed out, that includes a requirement for a trip insurance. a little bit more fleshed out, that includes a requirement for a trip insurance, that includes a, I would say, I mean, you could say COVID or illness mitigation plan, which would address questions of about, you know, certain, at what number of students, you have to leave two chaperones at what, you know, whatever the case might be. So I would, I would feel more comfortable with that. If we, I think the intent has been expressed to the community. I know many, many people watch these meetings. I think the, the intent is expressed, and I would just like a more crafted motion, fully, fully fleshed out motion to take action on.
Okay, so I am willing to withdraw my motion with, with throwing in the fact that I am then going to direct the administration to have this plan in place for us to take action on at the next regular meeting in August. That, that's what I'm saying. I'm willing to do that. I, I think that's well thought out. Then I'm asking Superintendent McDowell and your staff to have a plan in place so it'll be ready for us to adopt at the next regular meeting in August. All right. Anything else on that piece? Lost my screen. Okay, oh, it's back. Yay. Okay, that moves us, we're moving off international trips onto the consent agenda. Consent agenda has been adjusted, so I am looking for a motion now to approve the consent agenda as it stands now.
Some of. Second.
Any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Consent agenda passes. That moves us to individual action items? Yes. That moves us down to individual action items, the first being bills payable. So I need a motion to approve the bills payable line.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All right, with no discussion, I'm looking for a vote on approving the bills payable line. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. The next piece is the personnel report. I said, I think it is. My screen just hooked up. Yep, personnel report. I'm sorry, did you say something, Director Ma? I thought you said something. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I saw you out of my, I, I saw you out of my periphery. So personnel report, I need a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on the personnel report, please. With no discussion. Oh, sorry, Director Tate.
I guess I'm, is there any way that we can talk about what was specifically changed in this since on Monday, we can't get into any specifics at all? Or?
I know we can't get into names. What else can we do with that, Dr. McDowell?
So just to clarify, with, with all of this stuff, there are, it's not uncommon for changes to be made, particularly through a personnel report by the, between when the packet goes out and when the board meeting is. There's, that's just not uncommon. There's just additional people on here that either have resigned, moved, or been added since the packet came out on Friday. Yeah. And reminder, the personnel report is a tracking report of, of the changes that are taking place.
Yes, Director Tate.
Then I'm wondering if I could ask a procedural question. If, if something in our board packet is changing after it's initially published, is there some way to communicate that to the board so that we know to go re-look at that document? Make sure, because, yeah, I spend hours going through this, and so I don't, I don't typically go through it a second time.
Director Hadeen.
So this is the practice that I use, which is commonly, nobody in my house is up super early, or they're up super early and gone on Saturday mornings. So I would allocate a chunk of time to going through it. You can tell when something has been amended or a revised copy has been attached. So for example, when you look at personnel report attachments, there's a parentheses one after it. That would indicate that it is a modification from the first attachment that was made. So today, I had set aside time to go back through and look at anything that might have been modified. And that's a common practice I have. It also helps me refresh so that I'm ready for coming into the meeting. But that's a, that's a visual cue if there's been a modification.
Yes, Director Tate.
I guess my question would be the why, you know, so if I already read through a, a 12-page document, and it just noted that it was updated, it'd be wonderful to know what, what was updated or why it was updated, from my understanding, you know, so that you don't have to spend that much more time rereading the whole thing to try to figure it out.
Director McDowell.
So the only thing I would say to that is if you think about today, the email that you sent me late today with a change, people would probably not have gotten that email if I would have sent that out to even notify them. So, I mean, it just depends upon the timing. If, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if there's a change that happens between Friday and Monday, that's easy to let people know. If there's a change because a board member wants something adjusted on Wednesday before the board meeting, an hour before, it'll get changed so that it's right for the board meeting, but we may not have had time to notify everybody, or people may not have seen it anyway. So I just wouldn't want to get called on the carpet for that and have to say, yeah, we actually sent it out, but you just haven't read it yet.
Director Tate.
Yeah, if I could clarify, I'm, I'm talking about substantial changes. Like today, I, I had, I, I reread something actually, and I, I found a typo in one of the documents. So I mean, that certainly I don't, I don't need to know about. But I'm just talking about any.
So you're talking about, I don't know, I'll give you an example. On Monday, somebody else resigns. I'm just making this up as I go. So that's the kind of thing, you'd like an email that said, hey, just so you guys know, someone else is resigning, and so the personnel report had to be changed. Is that where we're going?
Right.
I'm trying to be clear. Yeah. Director Hadeen.
Again, to Superintendent McDowell's point, the personnel report is a tracking document, and I would expect that the HR department is working every day and making modifications and additions every day, whether that's somebody accepting a position, declining a position, changing positions. So that, that's a tracking document. And, and I also found a typo this morning, and I submitted that to Becky, and it got changed, and it's in the agenda, or it's in the minutes as, as number two. I changed one number from four to five, five to four. I mean, I think it's, should there be a substantive add, like new topic, or hey, we finally got the bid documents, and we're adding a bid document? I feel like that's, that's a fair thing to point out. But to Superintendent McDowell's point, the rest of this is, can be changing right up to the minute. And it's our, it's our responsibility to be aware, I think, or be ready.
Director Tate.
And I, I guess that's my point. I mean, we're, we're being asked to, to take action on everything that's on the, on this list. And in our, I just want to make sure that I, I have the most, I'm aware of the most up-to-date information, or, like I said, I, I spend hours going through this each month. So just, just looking for, for confirmation that, you know, if something has changed that I'm voting on, I just want to make sure that I'm aware of it.
I think we can make best efforts to, as we're going into our week, to try to make sure that those things that we consider substantial are, are being mentioned, and just see where we end up in terms of that. Obviously, the smaller things aren't critical enough to go through that whole rig and roll, but if it's something substantial enough, I think that we can make the efforts to get that done. People, you know, major grouping of people being added or subtracted or something like that, that we need to look at again. But bearing in mind that most of the personnel report is kind of an ebb and flow thing, because it's a large district, people come and go, and it could change at the last minute. But a concerted effort to make sure that we're as in the loop as possible, as timely as possible. I think that's probably what's been attempted, and we just have to continue to be vigilant about it. Director Hadeen? No? Okay. Director Dresley?
So my reason for pulling it out of the consent agenda was just to make sure that everybody was aware of the changes that were made, because I know that I wouldn't want to be voting on something that we didn't look, we all didn't take a look at first, so.
Nope, and it's worthwhile conversation. And I'm, you know, I'm glad we had an opportunity to hammer, hammer at it for a little while. I have no problem with that. Everybody's voice is important. So with that, I'm going to ask for a vote on the personnel report that's in front of us. All those in favor of approving it, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? One, that'd be four, one. Motion passes. Now we move to yearly board membership renewals. And my understanding is this is here, it was brought forward by Director Tate, based on two things that you considered to be conflicting. So I thought we could, we can talk about that for a moment.
Yeah, I guess, I had asked what, what advantages we have to being a part of these various organizations, and I was advised that the S E E and the A M S D basically do the same functions, but the S E E is targeted towards rural schools, and A M S D is targeted toward the metropolitan schools. And so I question the value of being members of both of those.
And that's a question that I had brought up last year. I think as part of our budget adjustments was something that, do we want to consider belonging to both of them or not belonging to both of them? Some districts belong to two, some districts belong to one. It's really a decision of, of the board as far as whether you want to belong to two. But that is the real difference between them. Schools for Equity and Education is really geared towards school districts across the entire state, whereas A M S D is geared towards more of the metropolitan or larger metropolitan school districts of the state. So Rochester, Duluth, as well as the metro area.
So I would, I would say that we would more, our community would lean towards the rural districts, so the S E E rather than the metropolitan. We aren't really a metropolitan area. Just my two cents.
Well, according to M D E, we actually are a metro school district. We are no different than, and actually Randolph is actually a part of, of that as well. So we actually, for purposes of geography or what's considered a metro, we are considered a metro school district. But.
I'm looking around for recognition or acknowledgement. I don't know who it's coming from. I think we live in a, in this, that most recent conversation speaks to this, that we live in this in-between space, where we are, we're a metro district, part of the seven-county metro area. We're part of probably the 11-county metro area, I think is getting larger and larger, soon to include St. Cloud. And that, in that, we align with A M S D on many issues. We also, because of our substantial agricultural tax base, as well as our geographic size, have a lot of the challenges that are similar to more rural or outstate districts. And I do think that for a not significant cost, reflecting those two characteristics of our districts and, and receiving professional advice and lobbying on behalf of both of those characteristics is valuable, and I would support membership in all of the the board, boards listed on the, on the action item. For that reason, because we live in this interdisciplinary space.
I, I agree too. So I, I have attended a few of the A M S D meetings, and I have found them incredibly beneficial. In fact, any board member can, can attend them. I have not attended anything regarding C, but I have seen the fruits of their efforts too. So I, I see benefit, but also I'm hesitant because I want to be financially conservative. So I wonder, you know, if maybe, and this is just my thinking, is that we move forward with all of them for this year, but have this as a discussion piece and, and have it on the, the budget adjustments for this, this coming year as, as a discussion point to see, you know, maybe we do need to consider moving down to just one of them.
Any further discussion? Yes, Director Tate.
I, I did have a different, another question. I'm just, MSBA, I know that there's no alternate organization, but are there alternate organizations to these remaining three? Or is this kind of like, it's S E E or A M S D are the two for Minnesota, or, and just wondering if there are alternates, if, if they're ever looked at on any, any kind of a basis to consider them, moving to them instead of what we're using currently?
There are not alternates to those two for, for C and for A M S D. And Metro Exu is, Metro Exu, there isn't another alternative to that. So again, the A M S D is really established. It connects, you know, as you've seen in multiple months in my weekly updates, there's, there's multiple things with A M S D that keeps all the superintendents connected. C has things where they, they do a lot of nice stuff with finance things and graphing and comparison districts and things like that. So there's just, they're the same, but they have a little bit different flavor and a little bit different focus. But there isn't, there isn't another group.
Thank you.
With there being no further discussion, I am going to call for a vote on the yearly board membership renewals for this year.
We don't. We need to.
We didn't motion this?
We went right into discussion.
We were all lost without you, Chair Nia.
Wow. I need a, I need a motion to approve the yearly board membership renewals.
So moved. Second.
We've already discussed, so I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor for this year, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Four, one vote, motion passes. Next one is donations. Now, we obviously get these donations all the time, and we have resolutions that we go through to do that. In fact, there's two other pieces on here that also have resolutions tied to them. All of us have seen the resolutions and read them. The public has lost that opportunity to do it. So the way that I like to go through these resolutions is to make motions to approve them as written, so that we don't have to go through reading these resolutions, which can be quite lengthy. So with that being said, the first one are the donations that we have received, April through June 2022. It requires a resolution to accept those donations. So I need a motion to approve the resolution as written for these donations.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion with regards to accepting the donations? Yes, Director Hadeen.
Thank you. The generosity just continues to blow me away. I, now having had the opportunity to sit at 917's table, and while they receive donations, they're, they're just not at the same strong level. And at this particular list, really, like the range of engagement from our community was just, it's just heartwarming, all the way from the candy from the senior center to the senior center receiving donations to the basketball shooting machines and field trip support to class parties. It's, it's just really a wide-ranging community engagement. And I think anybody who's got some free time should just take a second, go into Board Book and read all of this. It's very heartwarming.
I absolutely agree. Agree 100%. With that, I need, did we do the motion right? Are you going to read the resolution? Go for it.
Because that is a resolution, right?
Yes.
Oh.
I thought we were going to vote, I thought, I thought, I thought we were going to vote for as written, that's why I was asking. I moved to approve as written. Wow. So all those in favor of the motion to approve the resolution for donations as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much to the community. That's, you know, boy, one quarter, six figures. That's, that's, it's quite a lot, and we're very, very appreciative of, thank you to everyone. We're going to go on to the Minnesota High School League media designation.
All right. So this is something we started last year, and what, as a board, if we approve... if we approve H C T V as our community TV, then they have the ability to get clearance for covering regional and sectional events that our kids are participating in. So I'm asking for the board to approve this again, so we can have the coverage for our kiddos.
So I would need a motion and a second to approve this media designation.
So moved. Seconded.
Any discussion? Great, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion passes. Just a side note, it's the coolest thing to see these kids on like TV, it's neat. Let's move on to bond contingency.
All right, so at our work session, we had a lengthy presentation about potential projects and the fact that we have a contingency as of last month of a little over $1.8 million. And a lot of this is due to budgets coming, or projects coming under budget. And so as we discussed with you as a board and that you discussed, what we're looking at is adding projected cost to technology, which would potentially offset that set aside for this year that, that the board had approved as part of budget adjustments to $400,000 to start the process for exterior monument signs. So if you think about the sign in front of the high school, working on a project like that where every school would have signs that designate and, and look the same. And then the third is $500,000 for ground and site improvements. So this is, majority of this is for the front facades of all the buildings to make sure that they've got the proper irrigation edging around the building so the grass isn't going right up to the building, things like that. And then safety and security, as everybody knows, we're working hard on safety and security. And we had originally allocated about $85,000 for this project. And the amount of safety and security that we're working on is now, looks to be around $300,000. So we are asking for board approval at this time, based on that initial discussion, which would leave, you can see a little over $400,000 in that contingency fund as of now. And we anticipate things going the same way and that contingency fund kind of going back up again. And so we'll have another conversation like this, probably between now and January, would be my guess.
Thank you for that, that background, Dr. McDowell. With that, I need a motion to approve the bond contingency.
So moved. Seconded.
Any discussion? Director Ma.
One of the things that we had talked about in the work session regarding this is to pull back the, or rescind the $300,000 from the general fund that was allocated towards technology. Is that something that we can discuss tonight or is it best suited for August?
You could do that however you want, that would be a separate item altogether. But that is one of the things that we talked about. And it's just going to depend upon when you want to have that further discussion, because that is a part of our budget adjustment and looking at everything this, that all kind of dovetails together. But we can do that either way, it's not going to impact us because that's a journal entry thing. When it comes time to doing that or not doing that, it just needs, we just can't do it differently unless the board rescinds that motion from December.
Yep, it's just a journal piece, just my personal take is that I'd rather have it be part and parcel of everything else we're going to have to do than standalone, because it's going to be somehow incorporated to all that, everything else anyway. So I think I prefer to push it back, but um, you know, that's up to everyone else. Also the side note, as part of that ground site improvement, Dr. McDowell, does that include the flagpole being moved?
Yes, that includes the flagpole at the high school being moved from the upper to the lower entrance, now that that's the main entrance for students.
Thank you. Anything else, anybody? All right, then I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the bond contingency as it is, as it stands, please approve by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Four, one, that passes. That moves us over to, courtesy, God bless you, that moves us over to courtesy bus routes.
So I'm going to start off and I'm going to turn it over to Jen Subert for details. The big picture of this is we are looking at reducing the, the amount of stops that we have. And this does a couple of things. One, it is a savings in transportation. Two, it helps us logistically with our buildings and buses showing up to buildings on time for when our start times are. This is another item that we had a fairly lengthy discussion at the last work session. And so with that, I won't say anymore about it. And if you have specific questions, Jen Subert has the most information about specific things.
The work session was really quite robust in this kind of information that, and gain this kind of information. So what I'm going to do at this point is, you know, the biggest thing, of course, the most important thing being safety at the end of the day. I am going to ask for a motion to approve this. And if there's discussion, we can certainly do it after we get the motion on the record. So a motion to approve the courtesy bus routes that have been established.
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion beyond what we had from our work session last week? Anything else people need to know? Oh, okay. We'll start with Director Hadeen and then go to Vice Chair Ma.
I, I don't need more information, I just want to highlight that I think that this proposed modification is indicative of the district office and administration sort of constantly being situationally aware and, and bringing these changes forward, both from a cost perspective, but in my estimation, more importantly, a logistics perspective. This is going to resolve issues of buses coming late, maybe more often than we would like to our later start elementary schools. And, and again, this was a, an issue identified by our administration, it was an issue resolved by our administration. And all of the walking distances are within establishment, we're not making any changes to that. No student will have to walk across a highway, there will be alternatives provided to them. And so I feel like, like this is just such a great example of that good work by the district office.
Thank you for that, Dr. Hadeen, you're absolutely right. Director Ma.
I, I apologize, I just thought of this question and I wish I had thought about it before, but I'm just looking at this map here. So for anyone that, and if you don't have an answer right now, that's totally fine. But anybody that is on that border, are they able to walk to a bus stop that is on, on the road?
Can you identify the border you're referring to, Director Ma?
The border, like, right there? Yeah, the regular busing border, instead of the courtesy busing border. Like, are they able to, let's say, you know, I'm just looking at that general Seabahn area. If, if they're able to, if there's a bus stop that is on the left-hand side there? Yep. If they're able to jump onto that regular bus stop? And that, it doesn't have to be answered right now, it's just something that just popped in my head.
Okay, so in general, if they're in the no bus zone, which is kind of what's in this map, they're in a no bus zone. However, if you get right on the borders, there are some stops that we're looking at adding as regular stops, right on the borders. We actually went with Terry from the bus company, I don't know what day this week, and drove it and watched it on the, you know, on his odometer and, you know, the, the borders are very close. So that's the one place that we are kind of looking at addressing.
Thank you, Ms. Subert. So with no further questions, I need a vote, that's right, because I already done the thing. I need a vote on accepting the courtesy bus routes. So all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Courtesy bus routes pass, thank you. Policy 610, field trips. I need a motion to approve policy 610 for field trips.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, with that, no discussion, I need a vote. All those in favor of policy 610, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Next thing on here is a resolution accepting the resignation of Director Reese. Again, I am making a motion that we accept the resignation, or sorry, the resolution as written. That's my motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, with no discussion, all those in favor of accepting the resolution as written, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. One more resolution, folks. Based on that resignation, we have to do a resolution for establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy for the November election. So I am making a motion that we approve the resolution as written for the establishing of those dates for, why are you looking at me like that? Oh, snakeys, we do. You're absolutely right, and I apologize for that. Yeah, we do. So I'll tell you what, right now we're on the filing affidavits of candidacy. I'm going to work this backwards since we're already on this one and then we'll revisit the other two. So what I need right now is a motion for establishing dates, uh, the resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy as written.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify. Discussion, I am so caught up in the other. Okay, with no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote. Do you have to have a discussion? Because if no. Oh, I did not see that.
Sorry, I, I just have a question. I was wondering where, and of course now I can't, I have the note. Okay, number one, it says the period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the Office of School Board Member shall begin on August 2nd. Why August 2nd? That is a great question. It's because things have to happen in a certain timeline and affidavits of candidacy have to start, I believe, day 97, day 98, before the election occurs. And then it ends like 84 days before the election occurs. So August 2nd is that first day and then August 16th is the last day. So, thank you.
Any further questions on that? Thank you very much, Becky. All right, with that, Vice Chair Ma, I need to do a roll call vote, please.
Okay, by roll call vote, we will just start with Director Hadeen.
Yes.
Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Ma, yes? Director Beisel is not present and Chair Davis?
Yes.
Resolution has passed.
All right, thank you, folks, I apologize. So we're going to back up to the resolution accepting resignation. We've always, already had it first and seconded, but we do need the roll call vote. So Director Ma, I'm going to ask you to go through it again.
Happy to. Director Beisel is not present, Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Hadeen?
Yes.
Director Ma, yes, and Chair Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
So we're going to back up to donations, again, I apologize, got into major voting mode. So the donations, again, it was first and seconded, we just need to verify through a roll call vote. So one last time, Director Ma, I'm going to ask you to go through votes on the donation, acceptance of the donations from April, June to 2022.
Thank you, Director Ma, yes, Director Beisel is not present, Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Tate?
Yes.
Director Hadeen?
Yes.
And Chair Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Okay. And just so the public knows, I'm sure they're wondering, well, geez, there's kind of, be kind of a gap there. At our work session on August 10th, we will, I'm directing Superintendent McDowell and our legal team to let us know what our options are, alternatives are in terms of whether that gap needs to be filled, how we go about that, that type of thing, to make sure that we're following statute in terms of filling a space for a very, what will be a very temporary period of time. And we'll go over that at our work session and then take whatever action we need to take on that. So that everybody knows. Okay, that brings us to any requests for future topics? Director Dressley?
Thank you. So I have a few requests for, for future topics. I'm requesting that the board give the policy committee direction to review 37 policies of the 117 current district policies to keep in pace with the three-year policy cycle. Just some, so we have some direction, I'll just leave it at that. I'm also asking for the board to give direction to the policy committee to define these three terms at the bottom of every policy, policy reviewed, policy adopted, and policy revised. Then my last request for future topics, or do we need to vote on, do we need to vote on these in between? No? We're good, okay. Is to, for the, for the board to give the policy committee direction to, I'm sorry, I lost my place here, direction to establish a policy for appointing, appointment to fill a vacancy, so for a new policy.
Is it open for discussion at all?
I was going to take them one by one, but because there's three, I was going to take them one by one. So I'd like to do it that way, I'm going to do the motions for these agenda items to be added in the future and then we'll discuss each one one by one. All right, so starting with the first one, essentially I'm going to summarize here. 37 policies from Director Dressley that she liked, that the policy committee directed to address. I need a motion for that agenda item to be added to a future meeting.
So moved. Good.
Okay, with a first and a second now, we can open the discussion, Director Ma.
And it'll, it'll be the same for all three of them, but, so three years' cycle, I was under the understanding after our last meeting that we were going to do a three-year cycle, review it at the end of the year to see if that is the pace that we are comfortable with and readdress any concerns. Open to receiving further direction, but until we, we establish this cycle, now that I feel like we have a good, we're on our way to a good pace, to give it a year evaluation and then, I don't know if we need direction, I guess I'm confused or maybe I need clarification on, we have a policy that says we will do a three-year cycle. So, cycle review, so what specifically are you looking for?
So for us to actually have policies that we commit to doing every month, a number of policies at least, so that we're not, I feel like there is a lot of back and forth, like this has to go to the board before you can make a decision that we're actually going to commit to a three-year policy cycle. And so I felt like that that was something that needed to be discussed since that was the statement that was made. I, I am very aware that it's already in policy, that we do a three-year policy review cycle. That's why I would like the direction from the board that we make that, dig our heels in and make that commitment to do those policies that are necessary to fulfill the three-year policy review cycle that's already in policy.
Director Tate, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I, I like the idea of the board giving direction as far as, as a board, what do we feel our priorities are that need to be tackled first, second, last, type of a thing.
Thank you for that. Director Hadeen?
So we have the board work plan which calls for a three-year cycle. I think that's already done, whether some year that's a 36 and some year it's 40 and some year it's something else, it's going to depend on the, on the, what's, what's bound together. So we've made that commitment. I don't feel like we need additional direction and I feel like it's constraining. The question that Director Tate is raising about the board setting the direction of which policy is, does not comply with our policy. board setting the direction of which policy is, does not comply with our policy, which is that the superintendent will establish the review cycle, and we have a district review cycle. So, I don't think we could just casually adopt something different. I think that we have to, that's an actual policy change. So, I, I'm not in support of that level of direction from the board.
No, I'm understanding that, but I want to make clear that this is not the forum where we are debating it. What we're determining is whether or not we want to have an agenda item for a future work session to be discussed, not here today, but to have it as an agenda item. I just want to make sure that we don't, it's not a debate tonight. Yes, Director Ma?
Well, I can appreciate that. I guess, I, I still don't understand what's being asked, and maybe the direction is that we take it to a work session to have a discussion to clarify that direction. Does that make sense? I don't know.
It actually does make sense. I think if there's something we need to clear up, then let's clear it up. One way or the other, I'm okay with that. I just don't want to, now is not the time for the debate on it. I just want to figure out, we're going to add it to the agenda for a work session or not. That's where we are, with the space we're in right now. Director Dresley?
I would agree that it would go to a work session, not necessarily a board meeting. It's not a board meeting topic, it's a work session topic. I just wanted to make sure that-
Yeah, I never took it as a, I didn't take it that way. I took it as a work session. So, if I was wrong on that, I'm sorry, I was very presumptive on that one. Director Dresley? So, that's where we're at, in terms of determining whether or not we want to put it on there. And what I'm going to do is, I'm going to take all three, part and parcel, because it all has to do with policy. And we've done the motions now. I just need a vote on whether or not we add it, we work to, and put it on one of our agendas for a work session. So, all those in favor of adding these three components that are tied to policy, 37 policies that Jessica mentioned, sorry, Director Dresley mentioned, adopted, reviewed, revisited, and the policy to fill vacancies, all those in favor, I need to signify by saying aye. I have no problem putting it in a work session. That's four. All those opposed? That's one. Four, one, on that one. So, we will get it added to the agenda. We'll note it and get it added to one of our work sessions. Okay, Director Ma?
I would like to propose adding the, rescinding the $300,000 from the general fund to our August board meeting.
Which one? Oh, the actual meeting.
The business, the business meeting, not the work session.
A lot of meetings. Okay. So, there's a motion on the table, that was a motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to take the $300,000 discussion to our next regularly scheduled meeting in August. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Is there any discussion? With no discussion, then we'll just vote to add that to the agenda. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? That passes. We'll add that to our regular meeting. Starting, Director Hadeen?
Thank you. I would make a motion that we have an information session on FAP 504 and IDEA considerations as they relate to discipline at a future work session. I would leave that to Chair Davis and Superintendent McDowell to determine when that would be best fit. We've heard a couple comments, both from the public and from board members, regarding disruption-free classrooms, and I think it's important for all of us to understand federal statutory requirements with regard to those educational categories.
I think that's absolutely fair. I'll second that. Any other discussion on that one? That'd probably help us clarify a bit where we are on disciplinary pieces, make sure we have all the information we need. All right, so, I'll work on adding that. All those in favor of that, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? That passes as well. Dr. McDowell, looks like you're feverishly writing, so you're getting all these? I am too. Okay, we can compare notes later then. Okay, is there anything else for, oh, Director Tate. See, I'm looking around much better now.
I would, I would like to request, there had been conversation several months ago that was brought up by former Director Reese regarding some union emails, and we had agreed that we were going to discuss it in a closed meeting, and I don't believe that that's been scheduled at this time.
And what, you can't, we can't just close a meeting to discuss emails?
It had to do with, it, it had to do with, let me, I have it somewhere, but it had to do with keeping union emails in, as personal emails, using only personal email addresses to avoid lawsuits. And this was done, I believe, the, the communication had stated that it was done with knowledge of the superintendent. And so, that's why we had had the discussion of, well, if we're going to talk about what's going on here, it was going to be a closed session. I can relook at the tape. I, I believe it was from the meeting that went until 12:30 a.m.
So, you want to have to, a closed session to discuss allegations against me?
That was, that was what the, that was what the conversation had been. And we, we had had a discussion, we all kind of said, "We need more information about this, to understand what's going on."
I'll circle back on that one, because I don't know, it's, it's definitely not an agenda item. It's, I don't know, it's something else. So, I will circle back. I'll commit to circling back with you on that, and figuring that one out. I've got to go back and look at that tape, too, but I'll circle back with you on that one. Anything else for agenda items? I think we've got plenty to try to wedge in somewhere. I'm sure we'll figure it out. Okay. Oh, Director Dresley, I'm sorry.
Can I just get clarification? What work sessions did we add in August? Was it just the one? We just added the one, correct? Am I correct?
I was going to the future meeting section just now, and yes, it's on, it's on the third. It's on the third, the regular work session's on the 10th, so, 8, 83810, and then, regular meeting's 824. So, that's kind of, that's where we're at right now. And the one on the third, I believe, just for clarification, Dr. McDowell, someone with finance?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Just want to make sure. Okay, so, for all the folks out there watching, these, these future meetings are out there on our website. We do have a couple of work sessions coming up in early August, and then we have our regular school board meeting at the end of August. So, look forward to seeing you folks either in person or at those. At this point, then, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
With a first and a second, then, all in favor of adjourning the meeting, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? No one opposing? Five, oh, we are adjourned. Thank you.